Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Thatt.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interviews for the Historic Preservation Commission, Adam Fulton. Fulton, I'm sorry, Adam. Could be a reappointment, right?
Yes, this is correct.
Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve, please.
Sure, I'm the library director at Morningside University's library. Been here a little over thirteen years now. Spent the majority of that on HPC. Took a little hiatus and I came back last year or two years ago to take over somebody else's term. And then I'm reapplying.
Questions?
I appreciate your dedication, Adam. I mean, I always appreciate your knowledge and getting to work with you on Morningside, but your service here, I think, is really valuable, especially on this commission, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Legg for the planning and zoning. Talk a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Well, I'm retired and I got a lot of time. Don't have a lot of hobbies. I volunteer at Saturday in the Park and different events like that. My friend Cindy O'Neill encouraging me to get on board.
What do you retire from?
Post office.
Pretty good knowledge of the streets and the neighborhoods, then, right?
Yes.
Great.
Always appreciate someone that's willing to volunteer and step up. Thanks for your help this weekend if you're Saturday in the park, then.
I was, yeah.
No doubt.
I was there, too. It was really well-run again.
It was, yes. Funny event.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. We'll let you know. Appreciate it. Today, we'll go to the consent agenda, which is items street through eleven. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on any of those items, please come up as I read those items. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Be sure to always state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the July first city council minutes. Four is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Broken Kettle Road sanitary sewer extension project. Five is a resolution amending the rules of procedure to provide options for members of the governmental body to participate in official meeting. Six are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing Larson Park Road for the OU Irish Road Bowling Event. B is a resolution of temporarily closing various downtown streets for art splash. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a renewal option number three with USP Technologies for odor control chemicals. B is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with West Plains Engineering for the Art Center HVAC Systems Equipment Replacement Project. C is a resolution approving a contract with, to mark out venetius for the downtown quiet zone improvement project. Is this our last one now? Is there another one besides this downtown?
Brittany Anderson, Senior Civil Engineer. This one will take care of the medians on Court and Virginia, and then we have one more on Iowa Street to put up signals.
E is a resolution approving a contract with FBG Service Corporation for Skywalk Cleaning Services. A are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to CW Suter and Son for the MLK Transportation Center Cooling Tower Replacement Project. I need to abstain. Conflict of interest. B is a resolution approving a partial settlement of a tort claim and authorizing payment. Nine is purchasing. A is a resolution approving a renewal option number two for High Chem for Quagulate Regulant. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Norbit Americas for the activated carbon flare medium for the wastewater treatment plant. C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Green Gas Services for removal and replacement of carbon flare media for the wastewater treatment plant. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license. Eleven are boards and commission and committee minutes. That concludes the consent agenda.
Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment on six B. I see Todd in the audience. I ran into Amanda Browder, who's been sewing together the covering for the Art Center Building at Saturday in the Park. And she made sure, just to really elevate our staff and talk about how welcomed she was and engaged. She was there with staff members and she was having a great time. She couldn't believe that, that we put on a festival like Saturday in the Park every year. And she just wanted to share her thanks, so I thought I'd share that here.
Mayor, on item ten A, one, A, the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino, Sioux City. I'm going to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest. Passes five zero twelve, a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Business Highway Seventy-Five Turn Lanes and New Street Paving Improvement Project. I'll move that. Second. Public hearing is now open. Anyone to be heard. Just want to say again, or just remind everyone, I hope we can take a look at the speed limit on Highway Seventy-Five as well at some point in time and reduce it. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero thirteen, it's a hearing and resolution approving, approving plans and specs for the Highway Seventy-Five Regional Stormwater Improvement Project. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Fourteen's a hearing and resolution adopting the proposed resolution of necessity for the, I'm sorry, that passed five to zero, number thirteen. Fourteen's a hearing resolution adopting the proposed resolution of necessity for the 2024 Sidewalk Assessment Program. I'll move that. Second. Before the hearing's open, I need to read this. Procedures to be followed at the public hearing for the 2024 Sidewalk Assessment Program. If there are any remaining written protests, please deliver them to the city clerk before we start the hearing. The council will now accept oral protests, but speakers must give their name and address before they start their presentation. However, only signed written protests will affect the number of votes required to keep all sidewalks in the project. All sidewalks proposed to be constructed are considered as one project. However, in order to conduct an orderly public hearing, the council will consider each sidewalk separately in the following order. Forty-six oh seven Boulder Court, forty-six thirteen Boulder Court, forty-seven hundred Bristol Drive, forty-eight fifty-five Bradford Lane, forty-six twenty-three Deer Shadow Trail, forty-eight twelve South Lakeport Street, forty-seven oh one Fox Hollow Court, forty-six eighteen Stone Ridge Parkway, forty-six oh six Stone Ridge Parkway. When your sidewalk is called, if you want to speak, please step forward to the microphone and give your name, address, and arguments either for or against the paving. You may speak only once on each block. Please limit your comments to not more than three minutes. Try to avoid repeating the same argument as previous speakers. After all arguments are concluded on each sidewalk, the council will consider an amendment under the following rules. A motion to delete must be seconded and passed by a simple majority vote, regardless of the percentage of protest on the individual sidewalk. A tie vote results in the sidewalk remaining in the project. If no side, no motion to delete a sidewalk has made, the sidewalk remains in the project, regardless of the percentage of protests on that street. After each sidewalk is fully considered, the mayor will announce whether the sidewalk is in or out of the project. After the public hearing is over, the council will vote on whether to proceed with the project. A minimum of four votes is needed. A decision to proceed needs five votes only if the project is protested by a sufficient number of owners who are required to pay seventy-five percent or more of the total assessment cost. With that, the hearing is now open, and then I go to each individual, right? The first parcel is forty-six oh seven Boulder Court, owner Don Acker.
Hello, I'm Don Acker, and I'm the owner of both, the first two parcels, forty-six oh seven and forty-six thirteen, I think. I own the home across the cul-de-sac, and I bought those vacant lots. Hadn't decided what to do with them at this point in time. I did know that there is no existing city code that would require me to put sidewalks on those lots. I knew that when I bought the property, and I thought I could understand that in good faith. So I've got to give you a little timeline. I apologize for having to do this, but as far as I'm concerned, my notice about this assessment is two weeks, two weeks ago. I did get a notice in March that told me that I was required to put sidewalks on my property under the city sidewalk repair and reconstruction code. I didn't understand that code applied to me because I'd never had sidewalks on those properties. I contacted my counsel, my attorney. He confirmed with me that, no, I am not subject to those codes. I sent a letter to Mr. Fair, or I had my attorney send a letter indicating that those don't apply to us. We shouldn't be asked to put sidewalk in. And if there was a different code in the city that required that, please let us know. More than two months passed. We didn't have any response, and I assumed this was a dead issue and that I would not be asked to put sidewalk in. Then we did get a letter from Mr. Fair to my attorney on May tenth just indicating that they were going to have a hearing and anybody involved in these properties would be allowed to come and speak to the issue. And then the hearing was set. And then we didn't hear anything until two weeks ago. And then two weeks ago, I got a letter that indicated that I'm going to be assessed and that the city is going to put in the sidewalks at their own volition through some kind of a city bond. You know, and first of all, if I'm going to have to put in sidewalk, it had never been clearly established I was going to have to. I'd like to do it myself. I'd like to use my own contractor, and I can save the city money not having city dollars go into that. But I'm also very questioning what's going on? Because it's my understanding that this, this assessment resolution has not been used in the city for about fifteen years. Nine properties have been identified. Two of these lots are mine. They're the buffer between residential and commercial property. It's completely commercial on the other side. So first of all, I'm, why? Is this a citywide program that all vacant lots are now going to have to be sidewalked? So that's a question. Is this the first subdivision of many? Is it the only one? Is it just our nine properties? Did it, was there an assessment? I mean, there have to be hundreds or maybe thousands of vacant lots. And then I would call voids where you have sidewalks on two sides. You actually have a house, and, and there's nothing there. I'm just trying to understand where, where's this coming from? How did, how, why did I get the assessment? Can somebody answer that?
Want me to go first, or you want to go ahead and try to? Well, we have lots of, you're exactly right. We have lots of these around town that people are not going to build or haven't chosen to build. And that subdivision that you're in is at least thirty-five years old now, because I was here in the nineties when it went into place. And so we're going to, and we started in Morningside. That doesn't mean we're only going to go to Morningside. We'll be going to the north side. There are some up there that need to be done. And so we're going to go and fill, start, begin the process of filling in sidewalks. Number two, you ask, can you do it yourself? Yes, you may. And with the council's part of the motion that I'm going to make today is if there's four-foot sidewalks on both sides, then the landowners will only be required to do four-foot sidewalks. It doesn't make a lot of sense to do a five-foot sidewalk when we've got four everywhere else. Alls we're trying to do is.
I was going to ask the same question.
Alls, alls we're going to try to do is get sidewalks. But you always have the right to work with the city engineer, even in a public, what do you call it, assessment program, to do your own. You're not obligated to have the city do it for you.
I have another wrinkle in my issue, because one of the reasons I haven't built on that is I wanted to avoid the snow removal liability of about a city block of additional sidewalk. I'm going to have to put that in now. I'm almost committed that I want to build on the lot. And if I'm going to do that, so I would like to ask that I be allowed, I'll put sidewalk on the Lakeport side within four months. My contractor said he could do it in two, but he's never held to a timeline I've ever asked him to, to get to. So I will have him do it as soon as he can. I'd like to not do the Boulder Court side because I'm going to do construction on it in the spring, and I would destroy the sidewalk in the building process. He specifically asked me to ask to have more time. And I'll make my commitment on that I'm going to, if I have not committed to building by the time the Lakeport sidewalk is put in, I'll put them both in at that time. Or I'll commit to building as soon as I can get my contractor to build.
You can commit to the Lakeport side, you said, because that won't matter.
I'll commit to that right now.
And then I know we've got another one that's asking for a couple of years that we're probably going to be flexible with.
Yes, Gordon Fair, city engineer. We also have another one who's asked, who's in the audience. He's going to be getting up and out.
Right.
He's going to build in the next few months.
Right, so we're going to, we'll be flexible on when, as long as you're willing to commit that if you don't build a house, and what'd you say, how long?
Well, I will commit to whether I'm going to build within four months.
Okay.
And then I will commit to building it as quickly, spring is what my contractor told me he could start. Like I say, I.
That's fine.
I'm subject to him.
Build a home?
I'll build a residential home.
Okay.
And we'll.
And I, because I, I am aware there are zoning restrictions on the sizes and all that, and I, I've only had two weeks to get this going. I've got.
Yeah.
I've got to get plans.
We're going to be flexible on that kind of stuff. Gordon will work with you on that.
Can I give you a picture? Snow removal is one of my biggest concerns. You see that big pile of snow there? You can set it right here for me. Thank you. I've lived in that cul-de-sac for six years. All of those six years, when the city comes in and does the snow removal, they dump it on my lots. And, and that's fine. I'm not, that's, that's great. They're available. I always get to the sidewalks before the city, because we're a cul-de-sac, we're a low-density. I understand that. They do a great job when they do the snow removal, and I've always been happy to have them dump it up on, on my lots. But if I have a sidewalk on those lots now, I can't move that snow off.
They probably won't put it there.
Well, how are they going to know? You know, if it's the same guy, I think I've, I've had the same guy, I think, for almost the entire time. He's going to pull in there in the winter. Snow's going to be covering everything. He's not going to know I have sidewalk.
He'll get familiar with it.
But, well, what I'm, I want to ask upfront, I mean, it is not legal for the city to cover my sidewalks that I have cleared.
And they won't. They don't do it anywhere else.
I know they won't do it on purpose.
No.
But what if it happens, the first snow, because he didn't know?
He's going to know. Make sure of it.
Will you?
His boss will make sure he knows.
We'll address that at that.
Yeah, and if it does happen, then we'll make sure that we do the right thing and get it.
And Julie and Alex are your point people for Public Works.
Alex and I are on the Public Works team.
I do, I do have a question, Gordon. This is probably for you. Looking at the photos, jogging my memory and making me think about this. As far as that, that vacant lot, is this putting a sidewalk in the curvature of the cul-de-sac? Or is it the roadway along, what is that, Lakeport?
Both. It'll be along Lakeport.
Okay.
And on Boulder Court in that cul-de-sac.
Got you. So, and that's why, sir, and that makes much more sense of why you're asking for that variance to wait until, you know, you have building plans to be able to add that.
I think if I have a building up, he'll understand.
No, that makes, that makes sense. I, I was under the impression, I was just thinking more of the sidewalk along Lakeport.
No, that's.
And so, and that one.
That will get done.
Correct. It's like that one, I understand, you know, can have some necessity and urgency. But, and then I didn't think it would necessarily be affected by the snow pile, but the one on the curvature of the cul-de-sac, that makes sense. I, I see what you're saying.
I'd have to bore a tunnel through it.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that they don't thrive over it.
Into the motion?
I'm sorry?
How do we build that into the motion? Or do we? The timeframe?
Sure, it depends if the council wishes to leave it in with the understanding that the city engineer will work with Mr. Acker to allow him the time to do it.
I thought I saw some deadlines in our homework that talked about May thirty-first and.
But they, but you have, Gordon has the right to work that.
To waive those?
And we had talked earlier about when the plans and specs are drawn up for this project and the actual construction documents themselves. Perhaps there are alternate, alternates that are bid in.
Those are original deadlines related to the sidewalk repair, which did not apply to my property.
You're one year out. Is that what you're asking for? I just want to be clear what you're asking. He wants to do Lakeport.
Well, it's less than a year.
Two, two and a half months, and, and then work with Gordon, whether he builds a house or not. And he's going to know that in six months.
I'll know within four months. If I'm going to commit forward, and if I don't, I'll do both sidewalks at the same time.
Correct. That makes sense.
We can live with.
That's all we need.
Yeah.
Stay that on the record.
Regardless of whether he does it or not, we are going to be going on that corner and putting in the, the ADA ramps. So they'll, he'll have something to match up to.
Yeah, that's not your responsibility.
Another question regarding ADA ramps. When you come around my corner, Lakeport to the Boulder Court, I would like to do the ADA ramp only Lincoln Way side, not the Boulder Court down to Lincoln Way. Because the property across is just a continuous run. There's no corner to go to. I have them on the corner across the street on my house, going straight across to the Farm Credit Offices. There's a sidewalk there to go through, but either they have to put in a sidewalk to, do you understand?
Yeah, on the other side of the street. Yeah, that was actually planned. We're only going to do the one ramp.
And I have photos of that if you want to see it.
The one ramp going to the south.
We get that.
Yes.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Nothing going to the east.
Because it'd be a liability issue.
Right. And that, we typically do that in those.
That makes sense. And Mr. Acker, just to kind of more pointily answer your question, this wasn't an effort to target any individuals or anything. It was prioritized. The Active Transportation Committee and city staff would go out and kind of assess, where are we lacking in these sidewalks? What would make the best connectivity? And then we prioritize that list. And then, to the mayor's point, we will be going to every neighborhood, similar. Yep, similar to how we do the repair project. The repair project doesn't happen immediately citywide. We go through districts. And so it will be happening, but the point is, we just want to encourage people with these empty lots or with homes without existing sidewalks to be able to put those in, because we, as a council, are saying, look, it is, it's really important for the safety of our children or anyone else using sidewalks. So that's, I'm just trying to clarify some of your points.
So I guess specifically, I'm asking to be removed from this assessment vote because I'm going to do it on my own.
No, you, you'll be in, but you can still do it on your own. Every, every, it's just like you get a repair bill for a sidewalk. You get a, like, I got a notice to Morningside to fix a sidewalk. I get them, too. And so they give you so much time. I have the right to fix that sidewalk myself or allow them to do it. And that, that happens all the time. People fix their own rather than do, have the city do it, even though they've sent you a notice that you have to fix it.
And we'll bid this out at that point. Is that like a bid alternate?
But you won't bid this my street.
Yeah.
Yes, we will. We will.
Well, unless he has it done before.
Unless you have it done before.
Dean is over here.
Is he understanding that if they bid it out, I'm committed to using it?
No, 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 no. We, this is where I have spoken with the city engineer, and we discussed some options as perhaps, including the properties that wish to do it on their own as an alternate, so it can be removed. So that's something that we're looking at. So you would not, the assessment wouldn't go on your property.
But you'll be able to see what the prices are that we get and compare them to your contractor as well.
Right.
So we're trying to, we're trying to be helpful, because we might get a more competitive bid, because we'll have a larger scope of.
I understand, but I also have a slope issue, and I want to avoid silt back on the sidewalk, because I think a low-bid bidder is just going to crank in a sidewalk.
No, they'll have to go, Gordon, because you can look at his plan.
Yeah, your slope has to be, meet ADA rules, and going back, tying it into your property, it can be done to your liking, or we can just plain slope it back. And if, meaning you have to put in a block wall or some kind of retaining wall, we would, but again, that'd be at your cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, forty-six thirteen Boulder Court. Don, I'm assuming that we've handled both of yours? Okay, thank you. Forty-seven hundred Bristol Drive, Shannon Wilson.
Yes, sir, Shannon Wilson, forty-seven hundred Bristol Drive. And as you can see on my property here, if I continued my sidewalk on, I am running right into a Mid-American Transformer, right under that forty-foot tree right there, so.
Are you engineering that one, Gordon?
We're going to, we'll be going around that. That's not the only one we have.
I know.
We'll, it's going to sweep to the, towards the curb and then back.
Gotcha.
Only thing we can do.
Does that make sense, sir?
Well, yeah, you know, like the gentleman previous, you know, I reached out to Justin, and, you know, they were going to get back to us with a plan. And we've never seen that plan or knew what was going on. So it would be nice to know what the plan is before, I mean, I'd like to get a contractor out there with a plan.
To bid it.
Yeah, we can provide that to you.
Okay.
Similar to the first gentleman, we can, we can go through our process and give you the assessment of what we would charge, and then you can check with your contractor. And as long as you're matching the slopes and the grade for ADA compliance and everything, you can choose whether to go with your person or ours.
Okay, good enough. That's, that's what I needed to know.
And they'll provide you the plan of what you need to do.
Yep.
Are we connecting to the next one, then?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's forty-eight fifty-five Bradford, okay. Forty-eight fifty-five Bradford, Brent and Lori Prius. How, how did they build that house without sidewalks, is my question?
That was twenty-some years ago.
No, I know, but, so they have no sidewalks on either side? Or do they?
No, they.
Yeah, that's what.
Oh, no. Wait, where's the one where, where's Prue's is probably?
Forty-eight fifty.
It's right there. Whoops. Hold on.
Oh, I got you. And it's that whole length of that street right there.
Mr. Wilson's was just that little bit.
Got you, the little jog.
Yeah.
Makes sense. So they do have sidewalk on the, what, east?
Right, but I don't understand how.
They weren't forced to connect?
If you have a corner lot, you should have.
They should have.
Both sides.
Those four-foot sidewalks, Gordon, are those four?
We're going to make it four-foot sidewalks. Yes, we're going to make it four-foot sidewalk.
Four-foot sidewalk on that one.
There's a lot of slope right there on that property, on that edge. That's why the cost is higher, but we're going to.
But your estimate was on five foot?
It was on five foot. We're going to reduce it, yes. We're also going to be working with the homeowner on that. He's not here in person. We've talked to him. We're going to sit down, talk to him how he wants to slope it back, the property, because the sidewalk has to be dropped a little bit, so there may be some small retaining walls, either a built-in one to the sidewalk or block.
At the top of the hill, probably, or?
Uh, well, it's, it's rolling there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that, well, we have to, we have to read that. Forty-eight fifty-five Bradford Lane, Brent and Lori Prius, Pruse, Priest. Okay, forty-eight twenty-three Deer Shadow Trail, Lance Hamsoth, Ameson, Lance here.
We have a written.
Yeah, I know.
One on that, and they are planning to build within one year. Wrong one, sorry. Within the next, the next two years, depending on the availability of his contractor. He's asking for a waiver.
Is he asking for one year? Is that, I mean, that's what the note says?
It says that, yes, but in his email, it does say that he's asking for, he says, he plans on constructing a new home within the next two years. He will install a sidewalk. he plans on constructing a new home within the next two years. He will install a sidewalk regardless of what's going on with the lot in the future.
I'd like to leave it at one year like we're doing with the other people. I don't think it's fair.
I agree.
One year?
Yep.
Fun.
How long have they owned that property? I can't see the...
He lived next door then? Is that the deal?
Yes, he does.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need to, Mayor, do we need to be making record on the ones that we're going to four feet? Is that last one just going so far?
We'll do it with all of them. We'll match all of, that's there. If there's a five foot on one side and a four foot on the other, then we'll opt to go five foot unless you correct otherwise.
Anywhere there's five foot, connect with five foot. Otherwise, go four.
You have that information for each one, don't you? It looks like.
Oh, yes. Yeah. We've gone out and measured it all. I just don't have that.
As long as that's understood and not lost.
Right.
4812 South Lakeport Street, Sandra Backus, revocable trust.
On a dead end, they have a written one. They're not going to be able to attend today. It's a vacant lot, ends at city limits. There's no, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Can you zoom in a little, Brittany? Can you zoom in just a little? Thank you.
Doesn't really tie to anything is the only thing I, my problem, but I've got the same issue with it.
So you can scroll up or out. So that's, that's city's property right there. That's a large right-of-way we have, very large right-of-way. And it comes around and connects into another piece of property that is owned by a county resident. The county resident just to the north. So that's something we haven't discussed with legal yet on how we proceed with that property.
Where's the county resident?
Uh, right there where the flag is on, the label.
No, yeah, where the flag.
Oh, clear up over here.
Yeah, that one. So you're saying eventually you would like to see the sidewalk follow the curve of that road?
And then go north, yes, and eventually.
Link back up to old.
It would be nice, but they're county property, so I have no...
Link back up to Old Lakeport?
Yes. At least get it down to the intersection of Old Lakeport and Lakeport. Sorry.
Puts in the extension of the sidewalk on the county or on the right-of-way you're talking about? Aren't you talking about this upper part?
That's all right. That would be us.
So the city puts that in?
Um, we'd have to because it's on the, the property, the fronting-up property to that right-of-way is a county jurisdiction. So.
But that's our right-of-way anyway, so we'd have to put it right.
Different than any other? I mean, it's all our right-of-way for all these properties.
But I'm saying that it's not city, it's not in the city limits.
Right. The property owner isn't. The city just has the right-of-way. So it would, it'd have to be us.
Gotcha.
But that, all of that doesn't change that it's a sidewalk to nowhere on?
Correct. That makes no difference to the one across the street. They don't, they have one to nowhere. Plan is to get them to continue on.
Gordon, my question then is, I believe it's, is it the plywood trail? What's the trail that's right there along that road?
Sergeant Bluff to Sioux City one.
Yeah, where is that? Where does that jog west?
Well, it goes right, it goes up to that property line on the east, west side of the street, and I don't have the plans in front of me on that to where it goes from.
Yeah. Do you know, Mayor, where it cuts?
No. I didn't think, I thought it was even further west than that. Isn't it comes up between Green Valley, right?
It has there, but there's also a portion that comes along Lakeport.
Okay, all right.
Is that drive, there's a new driveway there to?
Yeah, because it goes in front of Ron French's house, which is just down the...
Oh, does it? Because then, I mean, that's where I'm, my train of thought is going, Mayor, I guess, is if we, the way I would see us wanting to connect, right, like the way I would advocate that, yes, we need to have it there, we need to put it on our right-of-way, is if you're allowing people to more safely get especially to that trail, you know, especially to that connector, because then you're connecting all the way down to Sergeant Bluff, you're connecting west to go to Chautauqua or Riverfront Trail. I mean, all those different, Cone Park, that whole area.
You can, you can take this out for now, and then when you know where it's messed with that, you can put it back in. So if somebody wants to move, take it out, you have to do that now. I'll move to delete it based on what we've been discussing.
Mayor, a second.
Second.
And this would be for the deletion of 4812 South Lakeport?
4812 South Lakeport Street.
Well, and is that basically, just for clarification, sorry, is, are we thinking then until we get more information, obviously with the county property of what would need to be done there, then we can know where the connection is for the plywood trail or at least that area to see how far south we would have to get?
The connection to the plywood trail would be at the intersection of Lakeport and Old Lakeport. That's, that's the only place we'd like to have the crossing of the street.
Yep.
That intersection.
That seems to me that you bring this back when you've got a city, because you're going to pay for most of that from their property down, then you bring that back at that point in time as a...
It's all one project.
Yep. I would be good with that, yeah. Thank you, Dan.
Call the roll.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
More.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
More.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
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 Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
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 Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
O'Kane.
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 Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
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 Aye.
Passes five zero. Sixteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Daniel Cummins and authorizing a lease of property at twenty-five oh three Discovery Boulevard, unit number one, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing now open, anyone to be heard?
Mayor, on item sixteen through nineteen, the visiting with legal, the... They still need final insurance certificates on those, so council can approve with an amendment to have legal approve final insurance certificates, or we can defer for a week.
I'm.
That's what we've done in the past, isn't it?
Okay.
You all right with that? Move to amend to have the city attorney.
These are people new to the city process, so they're trying to get their... They've all submitted and they're trying to edit to get the right terms on it.
Can we move the... We have to move the amendment each one?
That would be my preference.
We used to do these all under one deal, you remember that, right?
Well, I don't.
Thanks, Mike. So on the amendment, for insurance, Dan made it, is there a second?
Second.
On the amendment, you gotta call the roll.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Hearing's still open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. I really think it would be a lot better to defer, and you're gonna be here, but that's fine.
I'm fine to defer, I mean, if you want to.
Let's get them done. Passes five zero seventeen, the hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Roger Milton Bergen authorizing a lease of property at twenty-five oh three Discovery Boulevard, unit number two. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open.
I'll make a motion to amend item seventeen to include that the city attorney may review and approve the insurance certificate that has not been submitted yet.
Second.
Call the roll on the amendment, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Anyone to be heard on the public hearing, if not, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero eighteen, the hearing and resolution authorizing the proposal of Double D Aviation and authorizing the lease of property at twenty-five oh three Discovery Boulevard, unit number nine, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open.
I'll make the motion to amend item eighteen to include that the city attorney review the insurance certificate, which has not been submitted yet.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. Hearing is not... Still open, anyone to be heard, if not, the hearing is closed.
Oh, shoot. Let me call this one. Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Nineteen's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Brad Cummings and authorizing a lease of property at twenty-five oh three Discovery Boulevard, unit number ten, I'll move that.
Second.
Hearing's now open.
Make a motion to amend item nineteen to include that city attorney review the insurance certificate, which has not been submitted yet.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Hearing is now open, anybody to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero twenties, hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Oracle Aviation and authorizing the lease of property at twenty-five oh one Discovery Boulevard, I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing is open, this one has insurance. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. That concludes the regular agenda. Before we go to citizen concerns, I've asked Mike Montino to come up and give us a little update on the... That last item passed five zero, give us a little update on Riverside area. Mike, go ahead and tell us what we... What you're finding out.
Good evening, Mayor, do I have permission to take the microphone and step away so I can address you and the citizens?
Yes. What's your name and address?
Pardon?
Name and address too, please.
My name is Mike Montino.
And you have to give your address. For the public record, you have to give your address as well.
Thirty-two seventeen Sixth Avenue in Sioux City. Good evening, everyone, my name is Mike Montino, and I am the Woodbury County Emergency Management Coordinator, and I want to thank the mayor and also the council for having me here today. I'm hoping that I might be able to, first of all, answer some questions, but I also want to hear your concerns. So, I want to start with a question. Who is here tonight because they've been directly impacted by flooding? Who here knows someone that has been directly impacted by flooding? Yeah, this is huge. I want to start by saying, what we experienced here is unprecedented and historic. We exceeded previous maximum river levels by five feet. Water rose to levels that it was never supposed to rise to. And I can't imagine what some of you are going through right now. But what I want to do is I want to start talking about what has been done and the direction that we can continue to go. With that being said, I want to thank the mayor, the council, all of the staff in the city that I've been working with day in and day out for the incredible efforts that they have put forward over the last several weeks. I want to stress that they made the best decisions that they could possibly make with the information that they had available. And I can say that because I was there when the decisions that were made. We had top hydrologists here in the United States that make decisions across all of the states, helping advise our decisions. We had the state director of homeland security helping us advise our decisions. And I want to thank them for some of their heroic efforts, and some of the heroic efforts that our first responders made, particularly Sunday night. Now, when a disaster happens and it overwhelms city resources, or we exceed what the city typically is able to do financially or logistically, they reach out to me as the emergency management coordinator. What I have done is I have reached out to the state government, the federal government, and I have asked them to provide us every resource that they are able to provide. However, this takes time. So what has happened so far is we had this event, and what I do is I do a damage assessment. We had a state-of-the-art urban search and rescue team come through the Riverside area, and they started assessing the structures. They've assessed them with different designations. However, those designations do not reflect what you have gone through as citizens. We have all been through a tremendous amount, okay? Once that happens, the state looks at this and decides that they should look further into the event, which they did with me personally on Friday. We walked through Riverside, we walked through Correctionville, and we went and we verified that those damages were in fact true, which they were. No one doubts that we haven't had significant damage to our community and to our livelihoods. Now, that gets submitted to the federal government, and they review it. It is up to the president to sign and acknowledge us and add us into a presidential disaster declaration. If this were to happen, it opens a multitude of programs and personnel that are going to come and assist us. I cannot promise whether or not that is going to happen, nor can I promise when it will happen. What I can assure you, though, is that we are continuing to work with our state and federal partners day in and day out to expedite these as quickly as possible. And I think one of the questions right now is we've seen this entire area get affected. In fact, this is so historic that it's going to change how we look at flooding in northwest Iowa and the entire region. But I think some of the questions that might be in your mind is why are they getting help and we're not? So the state did something very interesting because of this event. What they did is they could have did what they did here, and I'll explain that in a second, or they could have waited for all of the water to get down to the southern portion of Iowa and then asked for a disaster declaration. They decided that they didn't want to waste time. So what they did is immediately when we knew this was going to affect Iowa, they went and they asked for an expedited disaster declaration, which gave us a FEMA DR number. So the first three to four counties that were affected got their disaster declaration. And then what the plan would be is to go through and do damage assessments in subsequent southern counties and add them to the disaster request. That is the process that we're undergoing now. Unfortunately, when it comes to those federal and state programs, it is up to them to decide. The federal gov... Or the local government and the county government has done what they can right now to expedite that request as quickly as possible. In the meantime, we want to get you as much help as we possibly can. So in response, I have been working with council members here, I've been working with the mayor. We are going to open a flood resource center at the Lutheran Church in Riverside on Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday, it'll be held one to four PM, on Thursday, it'll be held from four to eight PM. There will be public offices from the city of Sioux City, various voluntary organizations, including the Red Cross, the Community Action Agency, and I myself will be there as well. If you have questions, I want to hear them. I'm also here to hear your concerns. When it comes to disaster recovery, it starts locally and it ends locally. We decide how we want to go forward, okay? And I want to hear that. I want to hear what your concerns are. I want to hear what the council's concerns are going forward. And I assure you that we will work through this together. I'm not going anywhere, I'm here to stay. And I will be here all night to answer questions if I have to. I'm here for you, I'm here for the council. But that's where we're at right now. Our joint assessment has been submitted, we're waiting to hear back. It could be tomorrow, it could be two weeks from now, it might not happen. That's a decision for the federal government to make. So again, that's just an honest feedback as to where we are. We're working as hard as we can, the city is working as hard as they can, and I appreciate your patience as we walk through this process together. I think the plan is to open up to questions.
Go ahead, well, they'll come to the mic and then you can stand at that mic and answer them, how's that sound? First of all, though, I lost the card, but it's Tram Win.
Yeah, Tram.
She submitted a card, so... Or he... I don't know where. Huh? Oh. Okay.
Okay.
Mike, just... Could I just... Could you just reiterate again when those meetings are so that we're very clear on that? This Wednesday?
Yes, it's this Wednesday. It'll be one to four PM, and Thursday, four to eight PM at the Lutheran Church.
Thank you.
And just so you all know, kind of, what the catalyst was with that or the thought behind is it's really difficult for all of you to try to coordinate your efforts and find the right resources or find the right person or the organization that might be able to assist you in what's available while we wait for FEMA to give us their answer, their response. So we coordinated an effort between our two offices, between Mike and the city, is we said we need to do everything we can to make these people, all of these resources, available to all of you in one location. So you know when they're available, so you know what is currently available to you, so you can ask your questions and hopefully get answers as quickly as possible. So we wanted to make that available. We're hoping that maybe by Wednesday or Thursday, we're having these, we might have more answers from the federal government, but we can't guarantee that. So that's why we thought it was important, while we're waiting, to at least establish this resource center where people can come in and talk to organizations to try to get the help that we know you all need right now. You don't have time to wait. And so we want to be able to try to provide some of those resources right now. And I really appreciate Mike and everyone's efforts that went into organizing that.
Thank you.
Okay, microphone's open for citizen concerns.
And just remember, you have to state your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Steve Corrali, I live at nineteen hundred Fairbank Street in Riverside, probably down along... Everybody's hit very hard down there. Anyway, some of the concerns I've been hearing from my neighbors, as well as myself too, is that all of these programs, these grants are all income-related. Some people qualify, some qualify for very little. It's... It seems like it's just like almost peanuts compared to our losses down there. And that, I'm speaking for everybody in this room, I think we all feel the same way about that.
The problem, Steve, is that these are government programs that you have to meet federal government guidelines or you lose your HUD grants.
Right, well, we were told that this was FEMA that was offering, they were already here, we were all told that.
No, and that's what our resource center will do when we meet there on Wednesday, is it will get you guys the correct information, because we've read a lot of things online that there'll be liens on your property if you get one of the grants, and all kinds of different things that are untrue. People are just kind of getting confused with different programs that they might be Googling or where they may be getting the information. This is funds that our city manages and it's provided by the government. So it's federal funds, and we have to follow those guidelines. So that's why we have to put it out for bid, that's why there has to be an application process. But those are the things that you guys will learn, and we'll have staff, along with interpreters, on hand, both Wednesday and Thursday, to walk each person who wants to apply for one of those grants, hard copy, write on paper, they will help you through that process, so you get the right information.
And then one of the other questions is why have we not seen any state legislatures, governor, governor's assistant, anybody in the Riverside area? I think we all want to know that.
I do know J.D. Shulton was there, because I was out visiting some of the residents.
He was coming, or we would have all been there.
Well, and he was out walking the neighborhood, that's... But I do know that he was there because I met some people and they let me know that he was there.
Where's the governor at? I mean, South Dakota governor's all over that, you know? I know not everybody.
I think that would be a good question for you to ask the governor.
Yes.
I express my concern that when I watch the news and the DOT's cleaning up one town and the guards at another town, and I get no help here. The governor's well aware of my feelings, I can tell you that, so you'd have to ask her why she hasn't...
Also, the press, they act like we... They can't come in and do a story on the people, what I hear, what I'm seeing down there. You know, they won't come in there, I've asked them to come in. And I don't think anybody's going to personally attack them or anything like that. They've got a very real story to tell that everybody should probably hear.
Right.
I think that you should call the governor's office and ask her that question, I...
I will do that.
I would encourage you to do that.
You bet. And then I... You know, I know there's several others that wanted to say things. Oh, one of my other questions I had, moving down the road, some of these folks are already starting to rebuild in the Riverside area, they're getting... Or they're making plans to. But, I mean, what's going to happen now with the Riverside area? Is it something we've got to go through after we rebuild again? Is that something that the city's looking into now?
It is.
Or engineers, anybody?
Well, we're going to look at extending the dyke, but I can't... I'm not going to sit here as a council member and tell you that if we get another event that's seven feet higher than what we've ever had, that you're protected because you live below a levee, and...
Well, we were protected, that's the way the floodplain reads, we're protected by that.
And that's a FEMA map, that's not... We don't set those maps.
But see, that... Once again, that levee did not breach where we're all at. It did breach up the road around the other side of Riverside. And that levee never was completed there. I know there was talk in the council years ago about doing that, and it never happened.
And that's... Unfortunately, that... The mayor is exactly right, that's the best answer we can give you. Is I hope, you know, that all of you are able to rebuild your home, whether it's where it is or wherever you want it to be. But we can't give you any assurances. We can tell you that staff has communicated and had conversations about what can be done to further mitigate these efforts. We're working with our engineering staff to look at what could be done and what funds are available to be able to make that happen. But we... If you choose to rebuild there, if you choose to rebuild across the street, unfortunately, in this world, we don't have guarantees, and Mike and I... Mike and I spoke at length this weekend and multiple times about what the projections were, what historically we thought it would be, and just... Pun intended, it blew that out of the water, it just... I mean, my parents experienced that in the lakes area, and we're experiencing it here, and no one... No one ever imagined that, and so we can't guarantee anything. But I can at least assure you that city staff is looking into it.
I think in Riverside, we would have all felt a lot better had we had some representation from the state level. You know, you guys have done great, you're listening to us now. I don't know, I'm pretty sure that some of the other folks have some questions. They may not be as civil as I am about it, but you know, I don't blame them either, but...
Yeah.
Thanks for listening me out, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate you.
My name's Jessica Seberg, I live at two thousand one Fairbank Street. My first question is, is all of you sitting in front of us, which of you have walked inside of these houses that we've had to be inside of? Which one of you have smelled the smells that are inside of our homes? The smells that I am now sick because of? Which one of you has checked on the inside of any of these homes? I get that you've walked outside, I've been there the entire time it's happened, I have not seen you, not seen you, not seen you, not seen anybody. And this is two weeks ago. What streets are you guys on, though? Because I feel like we're... I know that I've talked to several people in this room, and none of them have seen any of you. But you guys want us to get permits to fix everything, and you guys expect us to wait on this help? I don't have the health to sit here and wait for black mold to grow in my house before I take the stuff out. And then we're also being told that we're not going to get this help if we're hiring somebody else to do it, that they're not going to get reimbursed and we're going to be out of pocket. We didn't create this mess. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm sad to say it, I don't give a damn about the lake. I give a damn about where I live and where I'm raising my kid and where I pay property taxes. That's what I care about. Where's our help from anybody? Come and look at our homes, inside and out, don't fly over them, don't walk the streets, come look inside of every home that was demolished. That's what we want you guys to do.
So, I just want to say that thank you for coming with those concerns, I think those concerns are very well valid. I want you to know that I have personally gone with FEMA and other staff.
I've seen you in different places, I'm not asking... I'm asking about them, where are they?
But what I want to say is if you think you're going to have some health concerns,
I do have health concerns.
If there's some other issues, come and see me and come and see some of the other agencies.
Outside in my car.
And we can work on getting you some resources that might be able to help, okay?
Doctor's office has helped me more than the city has. It's sad, Riverside has been the bastard child of Sioux City for years, and it continues to go that way. Our roads suck, our schools suck, we get nothing. The rest of Sioux City, you guys are out here, you're building new buildings, you're bringing in businesses, you're doing all this stuff. Where's Riverside in all of this? Morningside gets... You've got a mall, you've got shopping centers, you've got everything in Riverside, you've got nothing in Riverside. We've got five-dollar stores like we need those. And nobody has anything to say. This is why we're frustrated. Nobody's saying anything, everybody sits there tight-lipped, and we're the ones out here working our asses off to fix our homes.
I have been in some of the homes, and I know what it smells like to be in a flood, because I did Perry Creek. What do you want... If we went out and walked every home, you only have to walk in one home to know the damage, man.
But that's where the problem is, is you're looking at one person's home, the damage is different in every home.
I understand that, but I'm not sure what that accomplishes, what...
So you can start helping us get the help that we need. You're very argumentative about everything that everybody has something to say about, rather than helping us figure out some answers to this.
I'm just asking, without a FEMA designation, I'm not quite sure.
But we have to have all the pictures and all the videos and all of that to give to FEMA to get that. If you were walking around and going in these houses, you may have more information to get them what they need to give us what we need. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if everybody agrees with me or nobody agrees with me, but like I said, we've been out here for two weeks helping our neighbors because we're not getting help from anybody else. I've been out there every day for the last two weeks, and like I said, I've seen none of you. I've seen Red Cross, I've seen firefighters, I've not seen one of you.
So I will tell you, because I think it's important that at least I answer for myself, I have been in Riverside multiple times, and I'm not trying to use it as an excuse, but I don't think with my wheelchair, number one, when I was going there with those streets, that I was very well able to navigate them out of my van, and number two, being able to get into your home. And what I want to say is I empathize with what you're going through, I know you're frustrated. I would be frustrated too, I understand. I don't want you to feel that you're alone, I promise you. I have spent more time on the phone, more time recruiting volunteers, posting, trying to figure out how to get you help, because I... I don't think you'll ever understand how tough it is to feel like an able-bodied person and not have the ability to help your neighbors, to help your community, to help your family. So I would... I would give anything to be in those homes with you, as I'm sure some of these individuals would as well, but I'm not able to be. So I guarantee you, if others up here don't feel able to be able to assist you the way they can, they are directing staff, they are directing volunteers to do everything they can, it doesn't feel like it's enough. Because you want people on the front lines right there with you, and I understand.
Whether it's just help demolishing our houses and we do it ourselves, so be it.
And I promise you that we're trying to find those answers and assist you. Like I said, I just want you to know...
So majority of... Sorry, but majority of the houses in this area that are flooded, not very many of them are young enough to continue to keep rebuilding these houses. Majority of these people are either retired already or within two or three years of retirement. My neighbors, they're not coming back. Neighbors further down the street, they're not coming back. And it's sad, like, we've got these communities and these communities band together, but when we don't have anybody telling us what we are and aren't supposed to do, and where we are and aren't supposed to go for help, then when you guys get upset because we're finding stuff on the internet, where else do you expect us to go?
And that's why we thought it was very important to partner with them and offer these resources. That was one of the things we were trying to do, is say we have to coordinate this effort to try to get the residents' answers and get them the help that you desperately need now.
So when this all started, we've got tornado sirens, we've got different ways of notifying people that weather is coming. Why were none of those used? None of them. I got woke up at four forty-five in the morning by a cop and a firefighter in uniform telling me, "It's not mandatory, the water's up to my ankles, what do you mean it's not mandatory?" I had to drive my vehicle through my yard and my neighbor's yard to get out without having it flood. So why was it not mandatory until everybody was underwater?
That's part of his job. You'll have to, that's not part of what we do. We leave that to the emergency management people and that's, that, they made that, I don't know, he can answer the question.
Sure. So, I wanna assure you, they used all of the best practices that they could. When the sirens go off, typically what do people do? They go into their homes and sometimes into the basement. During a flood event, that is not what we want to have happen. We're putting lives at risk. We're putting people at risk that now might be going into their homes and into the basement, not getting the right information, and now they're at risk. So what we used is something called wireless emergency alerts. It was originally used as a presidential system to notify all of the citizens during a national disaster. We had the state government put one of those out for us in order to keep you safe. And then we also sent firefighters, police officers, door to door, to help get people up. And I assure you, that's why we didn't set off the sirens. And that's why in Hawaii, we didn't set off the sirens, right, during the wildfires. We don't want people to go into their houses when we want them to leave, right? We would put more people at risk.
We all just kind of feel like Riverside is being silenced in all of this. Like we're not supposed to talk about it, like we're not supposed to be hurt or angry. These are our lives. These are our homes where we raise our kids.
But you are here talking about it and we're listening. And I assure you, and I know there's an expectation right now that the local government is gonna wave a magic wand and fix all of this. And I assure you, it hasn't been fixed yet because they can't.
We know it hasn't.
If they could, we would have put the federal government out of business a long time ago, okay? With every hurricane and every earthquake that's ever happened. I assure you that the city of Sioux City, Woodbury County, and the state of Iowa has thrown just about every resource that's been available right now. And now we're looking for more help. And unfortunately, we have to wait for that.
What do we do when you're not around to answer these questions? Who do we go to?
Me.
But what if you're not there?
I am here.
So we have, you're our only connection to anybody.
So, I have been working continuously with the staff of Sioux City. I am here. We have county staff that are helping to answer questions for county residents. And I assure you that at all of these events that we're having, I will be there and I will have trained staff there to be able to answer some of these questions as well.
So I think if you answered the question about the ten thousand dollar grant that the state, city, whichever put it out, put out, we wanna know, what does that entail? What are we getting? What are we allowed to do? What are we not allowed to do? What do we do?
So, when we're talking about grants, and I understand it's very confusing because there's a lot of them out there, right? Unfortunately, me as one person, I can't answer a question about a specific grant. The mayor can't answer questions about specific grants, which is why I built teams. I get people together in one room that have all the answers. And that's exactly what we're doing Wednesday and Thursday. We want you to go around and ask these questions. Know what's available to you, right? And who talked about the financial part of this, right? This is based on financial abilities? What I wanna do is get you guys exposed to as many programs as possible, right? I can't control the individual programs, but what I can do is increase your chances of being eligible for some of these programs. And that's exactly what we wanna do. And I want you to know, they've been working hard as well. I spent almost two hours on the phone with Alex yesterday talking. So, I encourage you to continue to talk with us, continue to ask questions. And those questions, again, help steer our response. So it's appreciated. It's needed.
Well, I will tell you, I trust about two people sitting up there.
Good afternoon. My name's Brandon Dix. My address is forty-six twelve Stone Ridge Parkway, Sioux City, Iowa. So, I had something written, but it's, it's already been said. I don't live in Riverside. I grew up in Riverside. I don't know if you're, if you're remembering Bob, but I played softball with your son. You know my uncle, you know my two cousins, pretty closely. So, I am an insurance agent, which is probably not the best person to be here today. Cause people don't know what they don't know and it is what it is, right? I've been in Riverside for, on and off the last three weeks. I've been up in Minnesota, I've been into Spencer, I've been to Rock Valley. I've had friends that lose their whole, have lost their whole house, right? It's devastation. I know, I, government programs take, I'm, I'm retired from the army. Government programs take forever. I lived it for, for twelve years. I get it, right? We can sit up here and talk about what happened, what could've, should've, would've happened, right? I've been in my cousin's house and I had four foot of water in it, right? We were out there pumping, pumping water for five days. That's not gonna get us anywhere. I wanna know, if FEMA doesn't come in, right? Ten thousand dollars per house and it's said, the grant is for a family of four. If you make more than seventy-five thousand, you don't qualify. I think we're all, we can all sit here and agree, the houses that got destroyed in Riverside and I'm not saying this to be rude or blunt or anything, but the houses that happened in Riverside were along River Drive or in the new, the newer area of Riverside. And the homes were the nicer homes or the more, more expensive homes, they were the newer homes. Ten thousand dollars is not gonna rebuild a basement. I don't know if anybody's ever, you know, went and rebuilt a basement or priced out a basement right now. Ten grand is not gonna be enough. So, only reason why I'm here is for a couple of reasons. I have clients that have an family. It sort of hits even harder for me. Not only are they clients, but they're, they're like brothers to me. So, I wanna know, what are the resources? Where, how can I help my client members to, to lead them in the right direction, right? I get, you know, I, I have, I've already had SurePro in, in my clients' homes, right, to adjust, to, to see where they need to cut their drywall, so on and so forth. But I wanna know, if FEMA doesn't come in, what is the plan? Is the plan still just the ten grand for, for a family of four that makes less than seventy-five thousand? Cause if that is, I would ask that we, you know, can we look at that? I know Mayor Scott, you said something about HUD or something like that with, with the federal funding. Well, what does that look like? What can we do to help these families, right? So, that's, that's my main question. Have we even thought about, if FEMA doesn't come, you know, what, the ten grand is not gonna be enough, especially with, with this income, right? It, it's just not gonna be enough. So, it's, it's, I'm just looking for guidance to help my clients to get the help that they need if they cannot afford to do, to, to get help, right? What way do we send them?
Who else is worried about this? What I can assure you is we're not there yet, okay? We're not at the point where FEMA isn't coming. I can't say that they are gonna come. I can't say when they're gonna come, but we're not there yet. What I encourage you to do, because I don't think the person in this room that doubts that we need the federal assistance, make it known. Contact your representatives, let them know that we need help here in Sioux City. And that's what I'm encouraging you to do now. As we move forward, we get additional information, we start working on other things. But we aren't at that spot yet.
So, we, so if, so we're just gonna start from square one? What, if, so if FEMA denies us or declines us or says that we, say we didn't get the, the, the okay from FEMA, then we're gonna start at square one when they give us the denial? To me, that sounds like we're waiting to be underwater before we move forward. That, that makes no sense.
Where, where's the city? How, how does the city come up with money? I mean, that's my problem is how does the city come up with money that, that's not anything but tax dollars? And that makes it tough for the other people in the community that.
And I totally, Baba. I do understand that.
Everybody twenty thousand bucks, you're looking at two and a half million dollars. We don't have two and a half million dollars.
I understand that.
Sitting around, that's the problem.
But there's still houses that, I mean, they haven't even tore out drywall yet. There was houses when you walked in them, they had literally had a swimming pool in the basement. The water was literally up to the ceilings of, of the, of the lower level. I mean, they're uninhabitable homes and what are we doing to, I mean, at some point, we have to step in, right? I believe, I, I think this gentleman over here said, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, wasn't there approval for a dike to, to raise that dike in Riverside at that time? And I don't know, I, I, I have heard that a couple of times, you know, what's the plan going forward? Cause at the end of the day, yeah, do, do we expect seventeen, or, or the waters to be seventeen foot higher than they've ever been? No, right? Nobody expected that. But at the end of the day, that was there. So, what do we expect down the road? Do we expect it never to get that high again? And at what point do we, do we, I mean, I, I just feel that if we wait for FEMA to give us a yay or a nay, I mean, so are we never, I mean, are we just not gonna help them? I mean, we, I, I guess I just don't understand that logic that, where you say, it's tax, it's, it's tax dollars. Well, we all pay, and I ain't being disrespectful.
I understand.
I mean, cause you guys all pay taxes right along with us. We all pay a lot of taxes in Sioux City, right? So, where's that money going then, right? It, that's, I mean, we're all in the same boat if we own property, right? So, at the end of the day, I, 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 I just feel it's not a flood zone, right? They don't have, most of these families don't have coverage because of that reason and they won't and, and so the insurance companies are not paying it based on the policies. So, are we just gonna say those homes are gonna be uninhabitable and then Riverside's just gonna go on? I mean, at that point, then what? You know what I mean? I, I mean, it's just gonna be a bigger problem. All I'm asking is that we, if we wait just for FEMA and FEMA comes back and says no, that's a problem. I mean, now we're, we're starting and now the mold has set in there for how much longer of a time to grow. Right? That's my thing. If we wait too long, I mean, it's, it's not helping nobody. It's, it's honestly making the situation worse, right? And again, I don't live there. I've been, I've been in a lot of homes out there. And it's, and it's devastation. All I'm saying is if we wait for FEMA, that's gonna be a bigger problem. And we're gonna have homes that are uninhabitable and it's gonna be tearing down homes. And now, instead of redoing basements, now we're redoing the whole structure, which I, in my opinion is, is just because we're being complacent on it. So, that's it.
Thank you.
My name is Carla Halweg. My address is two thousand Hanford Street. So, I'm here tonight. Well, I'm one of the lucky ones. My main floor was not affected. However, uh, my, my crawl space has to be totally redone. My main water line to my house is, I have no water at this, at this point. Because there's about seven homes out there that apparently the, the flood shifted the pipes from the street to the house. My husband and I have been in a hotel with our two cats for the last two weeks, which at this point has probably cost us about two thousand dollars. I was, uh, talking with one of my neighbors and she said she had contacted Thrasher. We have Thrasher coming in the morning. She had contacted Thrasher at one point in her, in their, uh, living at their house. And they quoted them about forty thousand dollars to do a corner of their basement. We have them coming in the morning, so. And then we, we had, we have that home serve through the city, thank God, cause that's gonna be on you folks. Um, or not you folks, but the city. To replace my water pipes or from the street to the, to the house. But I don't know how long that's gonna take. So, I could be in a hotel for another two months with my two cats and my husband. Again, we've been there for two weeks. It's already been two thousand dollars. So I'm looking at, do I get an apartment at this point? Plus, I gotta make my house payment. My main question today, a friend of mine had worked for the city for thirty years, okay? I've got two questions. Apparently over in Riverside, there used to be three pumps. There's now one. Why is that? The two pumps were taken out. I don't know how many years ago. I don't know when. I don't know. Why were the two pumps taken out and why have they not been replaced? And I wanna know, which one of you up here tonight? Which one of you is going to tell me the truth of what really happened? Did, did the pumps not work?
That's what somebody told me, that one of them didn't work and was a resident. I don't know the answer to that.
Why don't you know the answer? You are the city council. You, you run the city engineering, you run the, the water companies, you run, you know, you run this stuff. Why don't you know the answers?
I don't, because we're more in a recovery mode and we have talked about having.
It's been two weeks. You should have an answer by now, as, as far as that goes, as far as that part of it goes, okay?
I don't have an answer. I don't have an answer. I don't know if these guys.
I don't have an answer.
Um, okay, so, and another thing I wanna ask you, again, a friend of mine worked for the city for thirty years. Apparently there was a bunch of COVID money that you guys got. Take, take that money and pay us. Take that money and give us more than ten thousand dollars.
It's a, it's another government program. You have to use it for infrastructure dollars. You just can't take that money and spend it. There, there's all kinds of guidelines that go with that money.
You know, I just, I feel like, um, it doesn't matter what any one of us comes up here and says, we're not gonna get the truth. We're not gonna get the answers from you folks. And that, to me, is really sad. My husband and I, we're not very responsible individuals for a lot of our life, okay? For the last thirteen years, we have worked our ass off to get what we have today. We don't have a lot. But what we do have, we have earned on our own. I've not, never been handed anything in my life. And I would really hate to have to see us take what we have saved in thirteen years. It's not a lot, but it's ours. And have to put this into a forty thousand dollar crawl space or whatever. Ten thousand dollars, folks, is not gonna go a long ways. So, like other citizens, I would, I would ask you, you know, okay, and I'm gonna say this, I kinda jump around because my mind, I'm one of them crazy ones, right? I'll admit it. I'm crazy. My mind doesn't shut up. There's a video of you, Mayor Scott, saying you dropped the ball. And I certainly believe that you guys dropped the ball on this. And I wanna know also, what is going to be done, like this gentleman said, I don't remember where he went. What's gonna be done in the future? What, what, what protection are we going to have over there?
I'm not sure it's enough. I, I have said before and I'll say it again, I'm gonna look at extending the dike.
Thank you.
But I'm not sure, I can't guarantee you that that's gonna solve the problems and we won't be back here ten years from now.
And I get that. I get mother nature is mother nature, okay? I get that. But there needs to be something done. When I bought my home, my second question was, can I get flood insurance? And then apparently it's not a floodplain.
But that doesn't matter. You can always buy.
We're in a floodplain now, aren't we?
You can always buy flood insurance.
No, you can't. No, you can't.
I wish, I wish the insurance agent was still here because.
Where, okay, send me to where I can buy flood insurance.
Mark Johnson, I called him last week. Can I finish? There are people out there that have flood insurance because they bought it.
There's nobody out there that has flood insurance. Who do you know that has flood insurance?
Mark Johnson has clients. I talked to his secretary. They sell flood insurance. And in fact, flood insurance is cheaper when you're not in a flood zone. But anybody can buy flood insurance.
No, you cannot. No, you cannot.
Well, then she's lying and selling policies that aren't any good. She, that's what I'm, I'm going by what she said and they're in the insurance business.
They will not sell it to you.
Okay.
These are some, so.
Right now, you know, he's not in the same level as us, you know, as a regular common citizen. He's not on the same level as us, you know, he can't relate to us.
They will not sell it to you.
Okay, I'll get, we'll have that answer Tuesday, Wednesday.
Please give me that phone number. I don't want answers. I want it now, please.
Hang on.
Thank you.
So this is a lot of the question.
I want to get moving on things now.
Carla, Mike, you have.
And unfortunately, I know you want this now, but it takes some time. Now, what I say, but I want to say.
No, listen, no. You stop a minute. You keep saying, I assure you. I don't believe what you're assuring me, okay?
I assure you that there are processes that are going as right now.
I was assured that, that my home would be saved.
To assist you, okay? Now, we see this all over the United States during Hurricane Katrina. Nobody thought that the levees were going to fail. They did, okay? This particular part of the flood plain and firm maps, which is what we're talking about here, are designated by the federal government.
Thank you.
So as we continue to go through this, the idea is going to be that we're going to have a discussion on this. Where do we go next? Why did this happen this way? And again, I, I don't have the answer for you now, but I want to get those.
I want to know who has the answers for me on the pumps. What, what happened to those pumps over there? Can, can we find that out? And if they were removed, why were they never replaced?
Yes, can find that out. Mr. Padmore will get on that and have an answer for that.
Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
I'm devastated.
Hi, sir. I am a Chinese. I, we live in fifteen ten River Drive South, Sioux City, Iowa. I, I can speak English very well. Can, can you help? We have nephew and can play a little bit. Said, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hello, my name is Lam Nguyen. I'm in sixteen hundred River Drive South and he's my uncle. First of all, I would like to say that, you know, especially in this day and age of technology, that we have the communication between you guys and the citizen here is a shame. Like we have Facebook, we have TikTok, we have Instagram, we have everything you guys can put out for like the news that, you know, like the update. And where do we get updates from? From our neighbors. And you, and you were blaming us about like, oh, like how we got the wrong information, but you guys don't do a thing about that, especially in this day and age. I, I mean, I don't blame you guys because you guys have like fifty-ish plus, but this guy, he looked young, you know? Where's the technology? Like, how can you guys are so out, outdated?
Sir, I would, I would at least let you know that we do have city Instagram accounts and we have city Facebook accounts, all of which were updated every single time we ever received an update, whether it was from emergency management, National Weather Service, what have you. Every single time it was updated. I'm very active on social media and I was sharing those updates. I can't help it if you don't like the page or you don't follow the accounts. I can't force you to do that. You say you understand social media. You have to follow those accounts to get those updates.
But sir, the thing is that me, myself, I, I think I'm doing okay. But then, you know, what about the folks that, you know, like fifty-ish plus, you know, they, they are not in touch with the, you know, technology? What were you doing about that part?
That's why we had to reach them in other ways. I'm just, I'm answering your question that you were saying the city didn't put it on social media. And I just wanted to tell you that we have a communication staff that worked very hard to get those updates onto social media. And then we understand that not everyone is on social media. I, I understand that. I understand people my age aren't on it either. And that's why we had to go to the emergency services that we have that sent out that alert. But we also know that not everyone is going to get those alerts. So that's why we have to go to our first responders to go door to door and do everything that we can. Because you're not, we could have sent newspaper releases. We could have sent K T I V down there. We could have sent K C A U, everyone, and people would have been lost in the shuffle. That's why it was important to go door to door and we did everything that we could.
All right. I would like to know that, you know, like, how is it to live in a warm home, take a nice shower, sleep in your own bed at night? It's nice, right? We used to experience that like until like two weeks ago, right? Warm beds, you know? And now we don't have a place to sleep. We cannot even shower. And what I would like to know is that, you know, like screw the ten grand. What is the plan to let us go back to our home, to our own homes and start living? You know, go back to our regular life. As she said, she's been in the hotels and it's costly, you know? It's, it's very costly. You know, some people, they don't even, they cannot even afford hotels, you know? I'm in a fortunate situation where I can, where I can spend, you know, like seventy bucks per day for like a hotel super eight down the street. But I know that not many people can afford that. So what's the, what's the plan for that? When can, you know, when can we go back to our own home, you know, like to, you know, to go back to our regular life? So do we have a solution for that?
We've already said that right now we don't have a solution.
Hotel Super Eight down the street, but I know that not many people can afford that. So what's the, what's the plan for that? When can, you know, when can we go back to our own home, you know, like to, you know, to go back to our regular life? So do we have a solution for that?
We've already said that right now we don't have a solution.
And, you know, like, so, and what if we stay in a hotel? Like, is there like a refund, tax return, something like that? If we, you know, like, like that? Because as I said, not many people can afford to live in a hotel, you know? Even, most of the people here, their houses are on mortgage. Let me remind you that. They still have to make their house payment. Am I correct? They still have to make their house payment. On top of that, they have to pay for the hotel. So, you know, at least put a word out, you know, like something like that, you know? You guys talk about like long-term solution. What you guys are not getting that, getting at is a short term. Like where are these people sleeping? You know, like I haven't heard you guys are asking them, like, like where are they sleeping right now? I haven't heard that question, which is, I think that one, one of the most important questions to ask, right? Where do they sleep? How do they eat? How do they shower? How, you know, I know some people lost their cars during the flood. So how do they get to work? Is there any, you know, way to have them get to work? I don't, I haven't heard any of those questions, you know, and it's, and it's sad, you know? So what's the, what's the solution here?
So I've heard a lot of those questions already. And as of right now, we've set up a disaster recovery center at my office. And I have several staff there tonight that are discussing these very questions, right? What is the solution? Not only long-term, right? Not what's going to happen in five years or seven years, but what's happening now? What's going to happen in the next week? What's going to happen in the next month? And what I encourage you to do is to come on Wednesday to that flood resource center. We're going to have a lot of those organizations there. And I think a lot of those organizations are going to be able to help you answer some of these questions. And if you want an answer now, come and see me after this tonight. Talk about your particular situation and I can guide you to some of those specific resources.
Okay. And the last, and the last question, what I find bizarre is that, so my uncle's house, right? His electric box is at the basement and of course the flood, you know, destroyed it. He wants to turn on his, you know, even though we clear everything out already, the, the, the ground is already pretty dry, I think. He wants to turn on his, you know, electric or like gas to start, you know, working on his house again. And we called the inspector and he said, oh, you know, like you have to have a licensed electrician to work on it, which would cost three thousand dollars to get his electric box to work again. That's a lot of money, you know? And you guys said that you would spend ten thousand dollars. And sir, madams, I don't think ten thousand dollars is enough at all. Barely cover anything.
You're right. It's not enough to fix the homes. It's what the city has available now, not later, to help everyone get started. It's one piece of this enormous puzzle that everyone is trying to put together. That's what our resource center will do on Wednesday with Red Cross, with other agencies that are local that can help immediately while we wait for our response from FEMA and from the federal government on some of these larger programs for the bigger picture. But the ten thousand dollars is to help people get started with that infrastructure. It's not to rebuild the house. It's what we have in our programs that we can draw federal funds through our HUD and help now. That's why it's important to sit down with our city staff and get your application filled out. Really, that's, that's what that's for, it's to help get started right away.
But if you already hired an electrician, the city person that gave me that application, which I already approved for that for the ten thousand, that, that lady told me, there was a right home and told me that my electrician that was already there rewriting my whole entire house would not be covered under that grant. You guys, that ten thousand, can you pay him your application?
But it'll pay for some other part of your infrastructure if you have.
Where is it? We all filled out this paperwork two weeks ago. Where is the help? Can somebody answer us that question?
Because, because it's federal funds, it has to be processed.
You guys are looking for young applications, so why are you putting out federal funds? Where's the help?
We have to have a recording of the meeting. It's a state law. You have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, we don't have to listen to you. We understand.
My last request is that I know that you guys are only at the city level. And Mr. Mayor, you know, if I may, you know, speak some sense to the federal level. Like I know that they don't live a life as a common people like us, right? You know, like they don't know how much houses cost, I think, how much electrician costs, how much cost of living in general costs. So please, you know, I just request that you guys speak some sense into them. Because, you know, for example, ten thousand dollars, but no, ten thousand dollars, but only for a four-member family that make less than seventy-seven thousand dollars per year. What age are we living in? You know, so please speak some sense into them. That's all I want. All right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And ma'am, to answer your question that you had, you didn't come to the microphone, so I just want to try to repeat it. You were just saying that you had some of that work done. You qualify for the grant and so you were hoping to be able to reimburse that electrician. We, I have not heard a definitive answer on if that's possible. And so we're going to have city staff available to answer that. But that's, that will be at the resource center. All of those staff will be there to be able to answer and hopefully provide clarification if it can. But just to answer at least one part of that question is, that's the unfortunate thing about the money that we do have available is it is tied to those federal programs. And so they, we have to follow those guidelines. And that's the unfortunate thing. That's why we tried activating it as quickly as we could. And it's great that you were proactive and able to get someone there, but we're just trying. And so I don't have that answer definitively now, but at least that you'll be able to get it on Wednesday, if not sooner.
Are we talking about the Riverside Remain Program?
Yes.
Of the city?
Yes.
Where a family of four, if they're just under, just under eighty thousand dollars, they're, they might get up to ten thousand.
Correct.
Guaranteed ten thousand.
Correct.
And common sense tells me if it's electric and it's because of flood related that the electrician should be paid. I, I have not heard that, that either. But of course I heard the opposite of the, what I thought was a rumor, but you all, a hundred percent of you said you can't get flood insurance. But our program, our national insurance program that we tie into, we, we can't, we can't deny flood insurance to you just because you're not in the flood plain. That, that was my understanding. So we've got these facts that we need to straighten out and, and get worked out, like sheltering the displaced people. Uh, I don't know if it's true today, but, but Sacred Heart Church was sheltering people before that. Wasn't the Tyson Event Center sheltering people? And that's temporary. I get that, but it was shelter that was being provided. The Community Action Agency has vouchers for, uh, for toiletries and for, uh, they have vouchers for food and they have vouchers for a, a number of things. So call the Community Action Agency and ask them for, what do you have to do to get vouchers? So that we can just have food, water, you know, the basic supplies that we're talking about. I mean, I hear you loud and clear. I'd have the same questions as well, but, but I want to have, want you to have accurate answers. So even I'm hesitant to say, well, I'll give you an example. I was hesitant to say Sacred Heart Church because I didn't call them today to confirm, are you still sheltering people that are displaced from their homes? But I think that's true. But, but there, there's a lot out there and I, and I, and I hope, I don't know, Mike, if you're going to have some of these agencies, these nonprofit organizations and, and churches and everyone that wants to help, voluntary organizations at, at the meeting on Wednesday and Thursday. But it would be most helpful because there is help out there for all of you. And, and we, and we need to tap into that. The hotel, Carla, the hotel bill, I, there's got to be an answer to that as well. I, I get what you're saying. I'm with you a hundred percent on that. And I don't blame you and you did a good job up here at the podium of describing how you really feel. Lady back there, how you really feel. We care. We're trying to help, but we need, you need to see some results. You need to see some action. You need to see things actually happen. You want to see me out there physically. I might have been out there when you weren't there or I didn't run into you, but you want to see me out there. You want to see me looking right. You want to see our US representatives out there. You want to see the governor. You want to know that we care and that we're showing that we care. And we do care. We do care. You are under a tremendous amount of stress. I, I don't blame or fault any of you for that. I try to be a good listener. I want to give honest feedback. If I don't know, I know you don't like to hear that from, from me, but if I don't know, I'm going to say I don't know, but I'm going to try to find out. And Mike is saying the same thing. He will find out and we will have those answers Wednesday and Thursday. Now, that's putting a heavy burden on you, Mike, that we have those answers on Wednesday and Thursday because we might not have the answer from the, the federal disaster declaration that we so desperately need to have. And I, and the mayor will tell you, he's, he's, he's my witness. I am sometimes overly optimistic. But when you see what other counties are getting, I guess I can remain hopeful that we better get something similar or better. I, but I'm just hopeful. That's my hope. Will that hope carry money into, will that rebuild your house? No. But I'm still hopeful because of what I see across the state of Iowa, what I can see nationwide. I had a question asked today of me, I just, and I'll, and I'll shut up. But I had a question asking me, they said, it seems like whenever there's a disaster and there's a disaster declaration, it seems like it comes from the federal government in, in minutes. All of a sudden it's declared a, a national disaster. There's the declaration. Why is it taking us weeks as opposed to minutes? And I didn't have a good answer. I think you answered it today, Mike, and I appreciated that. So, but it's difficult. I just want to acknowledge that and we care. And, and you're all doing a great job under these circumstances, under these conditions. I appreciate that you're working hard to be civil with us, but we also want to hear how you really feel. I want to, I want to know how you really feel. And the lady back there, you told me exactly how you feel and that, and that helps me. That, yeah, yeah, that helps. But, but there are these places that are offering shelter. They're offering vouchers. So we need to, we need to have somehow connect that and tie it in with what your needs are. And maybe you'll come to the podium after this person.
Hi, my name is Trudy Johnson. I live at twenty-two thirty-six River Drive. We live down by the baseball park. Uh, we were, um, we were kind of lucky. We only had our basement flood about seven feet. I guess, uh, we've been waiting for the city to come, uh, look at our house. We got all, everything moved out, everything cleaned. We're trying to figure out what all is wrong. We don't know. We don't know if there's any structural damage. We don't know if the furnace is good. We don't know if the hot water heater is good. We haven't seen. is good, we don't know if the hot water heater is good, we haven't seen nobody. They tell me I'm on a list, I've been on a list for a week. And I understand there's a lot of people, I understand that. I thankfully have a place to stay, I don't have to stay in a hotel. We didn't lose our whole entire house, like most of the people in Riverside did, we lost our basement. But we're ready to go home. I want to know when my house is going to be inspected.
Ma'am, can I have you repeat your address one more time?
2236 River Drive South.
You said you're on a waiting list?
I called and they told me...
Building inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
That I was on a waiting list.
Building Inspections Division?
Yes, yes, sir.
And they put you on a list before they can come out and...
They told me that they would contact me when they could come to our home and assess it. I have heard not a peep.
Will you have your people be out there as well?
Yes. I work during the day, of course, but I have my phone on me. I have not heard anything, like I said, we don't know what's wrong. We can't say, okay, yeah, we're going to need a new furnace, yeah, we need a new this, we need that, because we don't know what's wrong.
Has anyone else had a building inspector come out from building inspections from the city? Has anyone else?
They...
You did, you had them come out?
They told us we had to because our electricity was shut off.
Yeah, so we, you'll take care of that? We'll try to figure that out for you.
Yeah, that's what they told us, because our electricity was shut off, we had to have an inspection.
Yeah, the city's supposed to try it out. All right, let's see what we can do, thank you. I do want to go to Tremwin because she turned the card in early, and I... Yeah.
My name's Tremwin, and I am at 4045 Country Club, but I was in the Iowa 51104. I don't live that area, but there was five Vietnamese family today. I had been there the first day, that was on Monday, the 24th, at 5:00. This Lisa, her house, 1900 Cavalier Way, right on that corner. She almost lost her life in the basement. The basement was about eight foot, because she, her house has two foot on the main floor. You can add that from the basement to floor, how many foot she, when the water was about five foot down the basement, she tried to get out there because it was too... Living rooms down there were in a lot of medications. That was her mother, who has kidney transplant and heart surgery. That's her mother who lived with them. I'm sorry, I can't emotion with that.
She went down into the basement and into the water to get her mother's medication?
Medication for the mother. At that time, three windows broke, we got a lot of pressure inside. She trapped there, but thanks to God, her husband was there. Why, we would be a funeral home today. But anyway, because I've been there every day for the last two weeks, I understand, I wouldn't blame anyone for this disaster. But I think it would be better if we get a little more help or a little more attention to what other people been through. So I myself been there every day on the weekend or holiday, we have like 30, around 30 volunteer on the fall of July. We always have to go home to use the toilet. At that time, I was thinking it would be graceful if we have the city offer a portable toilet at that, because no one would have any... So I had to go back home like 20 minutes away and come back, and then some of them, I'm sorry saying that, having diarrhea, that was even... It's just the point that Lisa fired them in the family, they have to move to a friend's house who was able to share them just a very small side of the living room for five of them sleeping on the floor and eating there. And on Friday, that a few days after that happened, her mom got really sick because they lost the insulin, they couldn't get that, she was on two insulin. And then she didn't have that for days, and she got dizzy and she had blurry vision. So I was working and she called me. I left work, went to the pharmacy, got two insulin for her, I checked her blood sugar, it was around almost 200, 500. She really sick. She usually cooked for them, and Lisa was working, all those family members, she couldn't do anything that day. I came there and sat with her, I gave her insulin, but when Lisa got home, they didn't have anything to eat. I wasn't there, I left. It was around 9:00 at night, that Friday. So there was a little argument because of all this stress. The mother left the house, walked in somewhere that no one was able to find her. So when she called me, it was really dark, called me that the mother left the house because of that argument. So I understand that no one could able to, like, capable to hold that stress. So I was looking around, I was riding around, and then it's getting late around 11:00, I found her sitting in that very unsafe alley. The minute I approached her, and she said, "I needed water." Could you, any of you imagine if I didn't fire her that night? She not gonna be alive today. I don't know. I took her home that night. Gave her my clothes so she can have a shower, and then she stayed at my house that night. I'm so glad that you brought out that, so we would have more information or answer on Wednesday and Thursday. That's what, none of us was aware of that, or we didn't get information. I myself, at the same time, that would think that if they could get help for what they needed right now, like Lisa had to pay like $1,800 a month for that damaged house. Now paying for a living place, how can they afford that for the next month? That's what I would say, I'm not going to put out there like, what are we waiting for? Just for the next month? How would they be, until next month? Why are we waiting for others' programs available? Do we have an answer for that?
Right now, but hopefully...
So I wouldn't ask for $10,000, $20,000 to fix up the house, just for the place that they need to live in, our current living situation. I know that's a really long process for them to fix the houses, and we understand that. I understand.
Yeah, there, we're going to get them.
It's really sad.
It is.
If any of you, I wouldn't ask why you wouldn't be out there, but I understand that, but in any of you look at that, it's all different conditions of the damages.
I think we've all been out there, we don't go at the same time, but I think that we've all been out there, I know I've been out there.
You go to the basement, how the damage is, he saw people, and then I, like, we have a lot of volunteer start feeling ill because of the mold, black mold. We wouldn't able to be here today, we wouldn't have any voices today if we didn't get any help from the community, from the trust, Riverside Trust. We would not able to do it. I can't say thank you enough to whoever involved in that. There is really a lot of heart, like pouring out to these people. I think I'm done with my part. But I would hope that we would have an answer for them soon. I would hope that we have more answer on Wednesday and Thursday. I will see you there, I'll be there.
As much as we can.
Oh, thank you so much for your time.
I thought I was done speaking, but I did notice a couple of comments that were made. I think actually you had brought one of them up, is that the response time, again, back to that, the firefighters knew that we were getting underwater, and I don't want to complain about firefighters, they're heroes, and they save a lot of lives. But they knew that was coming in. I only had time to alert four people in there, and as I left, I talked with them. I don't know why they didn't get some of these people that were in their basements and almost drowning and stuff. What was the response? I mean, somewhere there was a breakdown, some kind of breakdown of communication, you know? And that's where I'm trying to address with these folks. I almost lost some neighbors in there too, you know?
So the question is the timing, right? That's your question? Is to, on Sunday night, right? So, again, I want to talk about how this event was unprecedented. We've never seen it before, and I really hope we never see it again. Now, what we have hydrologists, the guys that actually went and got degrees and they went to school to study river systems, they create what are called models, and they use that with historical data to try and project forward what's going to happen. And we had them consulting with us, and the original models that we had and the subsequent models didn't show these river levels getting anywhere close to where they did.
I got that, but what about the response time? I mean, they knew at 12:30, Mary, at 12:30, I got Mary out of bed, and...
And there was a good three foot of water happening by Brad, but...
And they knew that, they were looking right, Mary's house is the one that shows up on the news all the time, because the cameras could look straight down at her house. Ma'am, ma'am, could you please just come to a microphone though, so that you can record it? You can use any one of them up here, they're all good. Thank you.
It was 2:00 when I got the deal on my phone, after he got us up at 12:30. And there was five foot of water in my home. My family has been drying and out, and it's going to cost me over $17,000 to be put back together again, if not more.
Your terms are all valid.
Mr. Shawton told me, when the day he came out and assessed the flood, he told me to have the city council get in contact with him, and he would try to help us all.
Who said that?
J.T. Shawton, he gave me his card and said, "The city council should have me come and look at things too."
We've talked to J.D. Can I get your name though, for the record, for the clerk, please?
Mary Hughes, 1330 River Drive South.
Thank you.
My name's Miranda Curiel, I live at 2020 Backstreet in Riverside. There's three points I want to make, kind of going off of what you said when there was Homeland Security and people a lot smarter than me talking about flooding in the area. Basically, like, the warning signs were there. I went back and I looked at the NOAA website, and I saw even in Dell Rapids that it was flooding, it was five feet above historic levels on the 21st. I mean, even in Haywarden on the 22nd and Sioux Falls, those are all along the Big Sioux River. I just, my question is, why wasn't there more in place? I mean, even at the press conference, that they said that there were barriers and pumps in place, there was one pump, we saw one pump, and at 9:30, it still wasn't running. So, can you address that?
The answer that I have is that us and the other officials in this room did what they could with the information that was provided. Now, initially speaking, again, those river levels were not projected to go anywhere near what they did, right? We want to make sure that those responses are proportionate. With that being said, too, typically what we see is some retainment of water as it continues to go down rivers and streams, right? So rivers spread out as they kind of go over their banks. So some of the water that we're seeing up north, it's understood that we're not going to see 100% of that water, and that goes into the model data. Why those were incorrect, I don't know, I'm not a hydrologist, and they're continuing to look into that and looking at why we had what we had and what can be done in the future to change those models to reflect what happened in this particular circumstance. But that's my answer, is that the response that we made was based off of the expert guidance that we received.
And, I mean, me and my husband took hundreds of pictures of the area, we were up and down the streets all day Sunday. And again, we saw one pump at the end of Beck and River Drive South, and it was not running. Even when there was water in the dyke, even when there was water in the streets, it was not running. And when we returned Monday morning, there was many feet in our basement, and it was coming in from the drains. And about 9:00 a.m. in the morning, on Monday morning, the one pump stopped working, and it stopped working for about three hours. And because we were there Monday morning, we saw it, we heard everything that was going on, you know, I was out there, I couldn't do much, but I was watching. And for about three hours, it stopped working, we were making progress getting water out of our basement, trying to stay ahead of it, and we, once it stopped working, we just watched the water fill back up. And that was three hours, you know? Where was, why were there not more pumps? The next day, we saw four, but on Monday, when there was lots of water in the area, we knew the levee was being overtopped, we knew the water had crested, but it wasn't dropping. Why were there not more pumps?
I know we rented four pumps, we had the tractor one not working, they blew a hose on that, they were fixing it when I was there, and I don't know, but there was one south that I couldn't get to, to see. That's all I know. I know we rented four, and we brought one from over on Floyd.
Right, but again, I said that the warning signs were there, just Haywarden on the 22nd, they saw five feet above record levels, which is what we saw.
I don't disagree with you. I'm not disagreeing, I think we underestimated what was going to happen because we relied upon other people that obviously...
So personally, I counted, just myself, just from dumpsters in front of houses or chalk on the windows, 100 homes in the Riverside area, and that's an underestimate. Most of it...
Like 129, I think, with everybody.
Okay, most of them being Beck, Hanford, Cavalier, and Fairbanks, and then along River Drive. And then I also, because, you know, I like to do a little bit of research, in those four blocks, the average cost of those homes is about $213,000. So when you factor in most of these homes that are basements and into the upper level gone, the number, the cost of replacing what is damaged is monumental. And also, just looking at old census data, the average household in Riverside is about three, and anybody that makes over $79,000, which is the income guidelines for this Remain Program, is over 30%. So you're looking at anywhere from 30 to 40 homes that wouldn't qualify for this. What are you going to do for those homes that don't qualify? Insurance has said that they will not help, and I have done research about flood insurance. My insurance agent says that all insurance companies do offer flood insurance if you ask for it, whether they do it in-house or they go through a brokerage. And yet, on average, it costs a homeowner about $9,000 a year extra, and that's just not affordable to us at all. And he also told me that about 2% of people have flood insurance. So, you know, you're looking at mostly everybody that are dealing with this out of pocket.
As you stated before, I don't think anybody in this room disagrees that the cost of recovery is monumental. And with that being said, in my position, I can't promise that there's going to be federal aid, but I do think that it's promising that the president will look upon that and... But I do think that it's promising that the president will look upon that and see the monumental damages that we're going towards. I also can't guarantee that the federal government will come and replace your house and its entirely. They will not make us whole again. However, it will give us a helping hand if they come in to move us into the future. And that's why I encourage, make it known that we want that help.
And lastly, I just wanted to give like a rough estimate of what kind of costs that personally we're looking at. We went from a five-bedroom home to a three-bedroom. We lost a bathroom, utility closet, laundry area. We already spent about 2,500 just to restore utilities and throw garbage away. We got a quote for $7,000 to sanitize and mitigate mold, $13,000 just to put up insulation in walls. So you're looking at 20,000 plus the 2,000 that we already spent just for the bare minimum. That doesn't include the tens of thousands of furniture and belongings that we lost. I mean, we have three kids, the five of us are living in the upper part of our home and it's just... I, I think I speak for a lot of people, it's overwhelming, the amount that we have to spend. And this timeline of we don't know when it's going to be fixed is not really working. Thank you.
My name's Hugo Curiel, that was my wife, 2020 Beck Street, Sioux City, Iowa 51109. So, I mean, I'm familiar with construction, I work at ethanol plant, I've been doing maintenance for 18 years. So I was out there when you guys were building the levee out there on River Drive. And my understanding is, your levee worked, but why didn't it go all the way to Beck Street? Because I was out there recording. Or when the water started coming, you were going to lose them three houses no matter what. Because clearly from your levee to them three homes, it was flat. Why didn't somebody, whenever, whenever that water started coming through them three homes, why didn't somebody bring a truck of sand, rocks, like the dune was doing? I mean, they had skid loaders, they had trucks. I saw you guys, once they finished that levee, Beck Street was open, we drove through there, no problems, the water was still low. I saw the pump in the middle of the dyke. I mean, I walked through there, saw the pump, it wasn't on. Two hours later, water was coming in, not in your dyke, not where you guys put that levee on with all the sandbags, beside it. Those three homes, that's where all the water came in. And my house got flooded from the sewer because the city couldn't keep the water out. Because all the gates were closed because the river was too high. Now, when I come back home Monday and I see four pumps, where were the, I mean, I was there when that big pump broke. I could hear it, I mean, it's down my street, it's five houses away from me. It's right next to Tran's house, which he lives right there. So when that pump broke, I saw them working on it, they brought a smaller pump. Now, I was pumping out, I had a three-inch gas pump in my, luckily I have resources because I work at an ethanol plant, so I brought a lot of stuff home. So I let him borrow my pump, I let my neighbor borrow the pump, I had a three-inch hose, I had eight inches down. So I had a foot of water in my basement, eight inches down, I was like, you know what? It's getting out, I'm, I'm seeing a little bit improvement, the pump went down. It took them three hours to replace it and bring a smaller pump. It took two hours for me to get three feet in my basement, right after that pump broke. Now, I come driving in Monday, you guys got four pumps out there. I mean, where were those four pumps? I blame the city, I mean, 100%, it was drain water, clearly it was river water coming from the north side, went through the drains. But all the houses got flooded through the drains. Because you guys couldn't keep it out. So where's the answer for that? Now, clearly, I don't, my family, with my three kids, your grant doesn't work for me. I make more than that. But my, my wife works at, my wife works for the school district, she's a city, so she's off right now. So I gotta figure out, and I'm a little more fortunate than some of these people because clearly 17 people had to get boated out of their houses. I got a little more resources, I cleaned my house, I gutted everything out within the first two days. I feel bad for everybody else, I mean, Tran came over to my house, I let him, I let him borrow that pump. And even after I let him borrow it, he was still pumping out for two days. So I, I saw city trucks, I didn't see any city officials stop by. How come the city isn't helping these guys pull their stuff out of their basements? Why are only volunteers, nonprofit churches helping everybody? What's the city doing? You're telling me the city workers can't go and help, help these guys get their sheetrock out of the basement? I believe one of these families has their, they're, I, you know, I drive by their house and they're still pulling out sheetrock. Their structure's damaged. I mean, two weeks of swollen water, it, it's damaged, there's no repair there. On one house, the basement caved in, it's red-tacked. First thing I did is call my insurance agent, you know what he said, he gave me the finger, he's like, we don't, you know, it's not in your policy. Back drainage policy, I didn't even know a back drainage policy existed. Uh, and maybe that's my fault for, you know, my insurance agent and everything. But no flood insurance, I guarantee nobody has flood insurance around that place. Nope. So my, and what I don't understand, I walked through, I walked through that bike trail when you guys, the sandbags were going on. And I took, I got pictures, I can send them to anybody, I got pictures of every hour looking at it until finally Sunday, she's like, you know what, they haven't said evacuate, but it's coming down the street, let's leave, let's go to your parents' house. I said, all right. I come back, we got a doorbell camera, shows the whole van, water comes up. Like I said, when I got home, I could almost, it wasn't even to my outlet, it was a foot. And it took two hours and that pump went down, I got three foot in two hours. And then I saw the pump they brought, it was a smaller pump. I, I mean, like I said, I, I work in this kind of stuff, so. What is the city doing to help everybody? Because I'm, I'm not going to wait for FEMA to rebuild my basement. My government aid, if it helps, it comes great, and if it doesn't, then what? I mean, I'm going to start, like these guys were saying earlier, I'm going to start all over. I'm going to start all over, I got, my daughter's room lost, all the furniture was lost, I just put carpet in last year, water heaters lost, luckily my furnace isn't lost. And I already spent like 22,000 or maybe 2,500 dollars out of my money. But yet, last year I get, I get something from the city, hey, fix these two dents on the sidewalk. You can't fix it by yourself, but you gotta get it contracted and pay this and that. Like, it's so easy to charge people. I mean, I get it, we all live in the same place and we pay our taxes just like everybody else. So what's the city doing to help us? Because that 15,000, I mean, even if I could have qualified for that 10, 15,000, it might build, put my sheetrock back up in my basement. I can't say for everybody else here, I know a few of these guys lived down the street from me and their, the water was up to their garage. I mean, it's two, four feet to their main level, so their subfloors are gone. So I don't know if everybody's familiar with houses and wood, it retains the water, it swells up. And they're still taking stuff out of their basements because there's nobody over there helping them besides kids and high school and churches. And we can't take time off our homes to help them because we're doing the same thing. But I haven't seen no city officials down there. And if you guys have been, nobody stopped by. I got, I called the Mid-America to stop by only because I wanted power back. Because I needed to turn on the A C to dry stuff, to get the dehumidifiers going, so I wouldn't have to run generators. I did that, nobody came over to my house and said, hey, this is what you need to do, these are the next steps, nothing. We haven't heard nothing. And we're all about social media and everything and my, my wife is pretty good about search, researching everything. And we looked at the levels, but the minute that water came by your sandbags, why wasn't there a load of sand? Why wasn't there more sandbags being built? The water, I mean, was only like going down the street. There was nobody there in that corner on that north side. We watched the bridge, we were on the north side, we were watching, I got videos, I got pictures. It came right through the park, right through the middle and ended up by Beck and the four streets down that way. I mean, River Drive, some of the houses didn't even get hit, so it came all the way down through the middle. And again, my neighbor next to me, his house is built so high, water didn't even touch his walls. He got seven feet of water from the drains. Like, his is probably the biggest house in, in my block and the water didn't even touch his grass, didn't even touch his outer walls. His house was drained, it was flooded, I went in his house, he's got nine-foot ceilings, it was flooded from the inside. All because of river water, but the city couldn't keep up. So, where, where, where's the communication there? And why was there four pumps, you rented four pumps, why were those pumps rented on Sunday? There should have been four or five pumps on that hill and I guarantee you, we wouldn't have had water. You guys would have, that one pump was keeping up. If that, and then I get your tractor pump was sitting there, but it was broke, it wasn't running, but the big pump was keeping up. But the minute that broke, the water started, it, it didn't take less than an hour, I had two feet and I, I just gave up. By then, I had a waterfall coming down my garage because I had a foot of water in my garage and I'm just standing there, can't do anything about it. But that one pump was keeping up, so I, I don't understand how come, you know, there wasn't any more pumps there. Because I guarantee, if you had three or four pumps on that hill, we wouldn't have had any water in them homes. So. And you know, I, I, and I was, I came a little late and I was watching everybody and hearing everybody, wait for FEMA. What the hell am I going to wait for FEMA by then? Your wood's rotten, you're going to wait for FEMA? Your wood's rotten, your house is messed up. I mean, at this point, in my, in my mentality, I want to build and get the hell out of there. I don't want to live there anymore. It's happened three times, this is the third time, yeah, historical levels, whatever, it's happened three times. And I, I really do think, and I'm not trying to be rude, but I really do think the city did fail us a little bit there. Because in my eyes, when I saw that sandbag wall, the wall did what it did. It didn't let water through, there was a couple of little spots, we drove through it, we took pictures, it was running down the street a little bit. But the three houses next to it, that's where all the water came. I even, I even stood there and the guy with the goddamn underground pool was mowing his lawn. But the three houses next to him, that's where all your water came. Why wasn't there a semi-load of sand, something covering that? You already lost some houses, the least you could have done the effort is to cover the water from keep coming in. Because I'm pretty sure, I'm almost guarantee, and I'm not an engineer, but I've been, been, I've been in maintenance for 18 years, I've been in industrial area. So I can understand if there would have been a hill there or even a wall there, we probably would have saved the town. So, that's just my frustration, I don't need any answers because I've heard it all, so I just wanted to let my point be out there.
Anyone else?
I didn't get my card in in time, but I'm not on the flood side, so I want to close that first if I could please, because mine is another citizen's concern.
Well, that's fine, you don't need a card, go ahead.
First, I apologize because it isn't part of the flood and I appreciate and I'm very empathetic to all of them and all your concerns. Um, the reason I'm here is I came before you.
Name and address, please.
Excuse me, Robin Shiro, 311 East Washington in Elk Point. I came before you with a Human Rights Commission concern previously, as you're aware. I was very, I thought, kind and considerate. Then when I said that, I thought that it was maybe an issue of the errors that, that was maybe overworking, needed more staffing or training. I was actually chastised because I came before you and I wanted you to be aware of it. I went back to the Human Rights Commission to discuss a concern because I received a letter after that time that stated that, that my current employer, that I'm employed with, that I had filed the complaint against, that the Human Rights Commission staff now had a, what they consider to be a conflict of interest. First of all, the lady was very difficult, the staff was screaming and yelling at me in a tone that nobody should do with anybody from a Human Rights Commission. They said that, she said that in the letter, I stated, I said, you know, I had a concern and I came before you and I could tell that she was upset, that maybe she felt my concern coming before you was negative. And I told her exactly what I had told you. And I'm telling you again tonight that I didn't have a negative concern. She told me that I had claimed that they were ignorant in that office and I never said that, you were aware, I never said that. She kept screaming at a higher level, her fellow worker was holding her arm back so that she didn't physically approach me, which scared me. Then I stated to her that I would like to know why they had a concern of a conflict of interest after a year, I mean, year, excuse me, a month. And she claimed that the city attorney was to blame for it. I know, having worked with attorneys as an environmental engineer, that attorneys take about one to two days to come up with your conflict of interest. Sometimes maybe a week, but not longer than that. This had been 30 days that I had been told that this file was being addressed and now I was being told that there was a conflict of interest. I would like this issue addressed. This is the third time I've come before you, I don't like to waste your time, I appreciate everything that you all do. Especially things that are more important than mine, such as what's happening in this room today. But I would like it addressed, if I could, please. I, the complaint that I came, I've been out of work from this employer since January. I was suspended without pay because I reported a theft at work, I reported a theft at work. And that's why I was suspended without pay since January, which is why I came to the Human Rights Commission and wanted their help. I would appreciate your help to help the Human Rights Commission to know what their actual job is and what they should be doing. So I would like it addressed, thank you. And thank you again for all that you do and I appreciate all that you have been doing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Matt, you.
Nothing sweet, just going to keep at it. Be all right.
Julie.
I'll echo that as well, we'll be present on Wednesday and Thursday. Keep gathering resources, I'll do what I can personally, I already have done a few things. I, I don't like to boast about them, I just do it. And so, I think I met some of you on the street, I brought warm breakfast around afterwards and listened and I... Yep, I remember you too. I've opened an account with my food broker and I have Nancy from your Riverside Church able to get canned goods, the big gallon-sized cans, so that she can continue to make her meals. My house looks like the Goodwill, getting things ready to bring and donate. So on a very personal level, I promise you all, I'm doing what I can. It's very heartbreaking. I know you guys are upset. We were flooded on the Floyd River, my husband's a farmer. And I don't talk about my personal suffering, but we lost acres and acres of soybeans that will not grow. So I feel you, I get it. But in so much of this, in so many layers, we are in a hold mode because all of this runs through the government. We're a local government, so there are all kinds of channels and things that we have to abide by. We have to follow so that we can get to the money for you. That's where the Red Cross and these local volunteers come in, they, they get on site right away. That's why we opened up the Tyson, we have shelter immediately. We rented pumps as soon as we realized that what we had wasn't keeping up with this astronomical flood. And we don't mean to come across as argumentative, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we are working behind the scenes. You may not see us, but I went to Goldie Park, I went to the streets and walked around and drove around looking for people who I could serve. And so we do continue to do that. This isn't our job, this is our service to our community. And so I do mean that.
I hated that I couldn't be here last week and apologize, I know some of you were here and sharing some of your concerns. I was listening and obviously participating from a home. I had all the plans in the world of going back to Riverside. I'd been out there previously and was going to go out that morning actually with Julie to deliver breakfast and talk to homeowners. And I tested positive for COVID on that Sunday and felt miserable all, most of the week. And so I've been out of commission, but again, trying to work and direct staff to do everything that they can to try to assist all of you. And I think all of you raise points that are understood. And I hear you and I understand how frustrating it must be to be in that position, to feel like you don't have a home or feel like you don't know what to do or where to turn. And as Julie said, you know, I, I, some days I wish this was my full-time job. You know, like I feel like I want to devote as much full-time energy as possible, but like all of you, you know, I have to try to pay bills. And so I have a full-time job and I'm just trying to do this as much as I can. I mean, like Mike said, I mean, I'm spending more time on the phone on weekends and it's been at the cost of my family life too. And so I'm trying. And so I'm trying, I think we all are trying. But it's clear that we're trying to do more, you know? We're trying to meet you all where you are and assist and find those available resources, which is why we're trying to coordinate things like this resource center. And so while it might not seem like a lot at this time or everything that you need, I assure you that you have a city staff that has been trying to coordinate and trying to work and trying to trial, problem solve, whether it was the water going around or doing all of those. I, I was hearing from staff at all hours of the night trying to problem solve those things, to be able to direct it, because they were frustrated as well. But I thank you all for your time and I think everyone needs space to be able to say their piece and talk about what they're going through, I understand that. But I just promise you that we're going to continue to do as much as we can and I'm going to continue to push staff and myself and our community. I've been reaching out to my employer, finding volunteers and places for people to stay already. And we're going to do everything that we can, but there will be times where it won't feel like it's been enough and I'm sorry for that. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Dan.
I want to thank everyone too that addressed the council and mayor today, it was most helpful. Your, your questions that were asked that were not answered, we will get answers for you. The pump situation came up at least a couple of different times, if not three times, and I don't know the answer to that and I'd like to have an answer as well. And so we will pursue the questions that, that you raised and, and it's something that I can't thank you enough because it's hard enough with what you're going through, but then to come to City Hall and tell your story, and I hope you know that we all listened to you and we all took notes, we all did what we needed to do to help improve the situation. Mike, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight, that was very helpful as well. And we will just keep marching forth and try to get those answers as best we can. Thank you.
I move we adjourn, but before that, I, I hope some of these things that seem to be questions that we should have answers for, we'll have those for Tuesday or Wednesday, I would hope, so. And I, I think you need kind of a sheet to be able to hand out, if that's at all possible. Second.
Move we adjourn. Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Gordon, don't leave, if you could.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
You take them.
Julie, can I have this a second, please?
Okay, well, hey, Mike.
Steve.
You take. Don't let him leave.